The board will now come to order.
Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman French, Alderman Williamson, nineteen present.
Quarant being present, I'll ask every one of them chambers in the galleries who's able to stand to please rise for prayer. Give it all honor to God. Almighty God.
Almighty God.
Source of all authority.
Source of all authority.
We humbly ask guidance in our deliberations.
We humbly ask guidance in our deliberations.
And wisdom in our conclusions.
And wisdom in our conclusions.
Amen.
Amen.
So, we had Miles and Turk Decamp, come and help us this morning. They are students at Canard. They're here to help and, you know, get involved in some civics this morning. They're speaking out against the Veolia Water Deal. But I really appreciate you coming down this morning. They take, they, on the day off of school, they came down here to help and to get involved. So let's give them one more round of applause. Our future leaders of the city of St. Louis, thank you so much for coming down this morning. Introduction round of guests, any introduction round of guests. Alderman from the twenty-third.
First, I'd like to welcome all the people in the gallery that are here to voice their opinion. I'm actually on your side, but welcome. I also want to welcome Percy from the firefighters, Al from the firefighters, and Celeste from the realtors.
Alderwoman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my guest the students from Sulard School along with their instructors this morning who came down on bus to see this process take place. So if they would stand and we give them a round of applause.
Alderwoman from the fifteenth.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Today, I'd like to introduce as my special guest, former Alderwoman of the fourth ward and friend Peggy Ryan.
Alderwoman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have as my special guest today, Mr. Anthony Lancia with the Associated General Contractors and Mr. David Holmes with the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters.
Any further introductions, any further? Alderman from the twenty-seven.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I would like to have my special guest of the day is State Representative Carla May. She represents the eighty-fourth district. And Tiana Cromwell, who is a twenty-seventh ward constituent. Thank you.
All the one from the six.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize the members of the Dump Veolia Coalition who have joined us this morning.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce as my honored guest, Mr. Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T and Leroy Grant with Grant Communications.
Alderman from the ninth. Any further introductions, any further introductions? We also have a new intern joining us, Brittany Kinsey. She's a third-year law student. I know she's in here somewhere, Brittany. There she is over there. Thanks for joining us. Alderwoman from the seventh, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for approval of minutes of October fourth.
Move by Alderman from the seventh, second by Alderman from the twenty-second. Any discussion? All in favor signify or say an aye. Oppose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
The dispense with line items seven through ten, first reading of board bill.
Board Bill 205, sponsored by Alderwoman Cruzen and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-seven seventy-four DeGiverville and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 206, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-four oh-six McNair and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 207, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-four oh-four McNair containing a severability clause. Board Bill 208, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty forty-eight Victor and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 209, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and Alderwoman Florida, in ordinance submitting to the qualified voters a proposed permit fee increase on mechanical, electrical, and plumbing permits issued by the City Building Division, establishing a city historic building stabilization fund and contributing to the existing special demolition fund. Board Bill 210, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, in ordinance approving the petition of owner of certain real property to establish the Sweetie Pie's Community Improvement District, finding a public purpose for the establishment of the Sweetie Pie's Community Improvement District and containing a severability clause as the extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
To the Neighborhood Development Committee, board bills 205, 206, 207, and 208 to the Ways and Means Committee, board bills 210, that's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following board bills were reported out of the Ways and Means Committee, board bill number three, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance approving the petition to establish the Hampton Berthold Community Improvement District. Board Bill number one forty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Villa, in ordinance approving the petition to the city for the recreation of the Coronda Leck Commons Community Improvement District and containing a severability clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Streets Committee, board bill one twenty-five, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance authorizing and directing the Street Commissioner to take all necessary actions to honorarily designate the forty-four-hundred block of Cook Avenue as Sylvia E. Miller Way. Board Bill one thirty-six, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance establishing a stop site for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on the North Sarah at Finney and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one thirty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance establishing a stop site for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on North Sarah Street at CD Banks and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one thirty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Wessels, in ordinance establishing a stop site for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Walsh at Fendler Place and stopping southbound traffic traveling on Fendler Place at Walsh, causing it to be a three-way stop at the intersection and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one forty-five, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, in ordinance establishing a stop site for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Tower Grove at Swan and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one eighty-three, sponsored by Alderman Moore, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate equestrian and pedestrian travel on the east-west alley and the north-south alley bounded by the North Bacon on the east, Cass on the south, Grand on the west. Board Bill one ninety-four, sponsored by Alderman Villa, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service, establishing a public works improvement project for South Broadway Streetscape Project Phase Two involving various roadway infrastructure improvements and enhancements from Courtois Street to the existing bridge over River de Pere Channel containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety-five, sponsored by Alderman Moore and Alderman French, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service, establishing a public works improvement project for the Newstead Avenue from St. Louis Avenue to Natural Bridge Avenue containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service, establishing a public work improvement project for North Broadway improvements from Thresh Avenue to Walter Avenue containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety-seven, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service, establishing a public work project for the traffic management enhancement Phase Two involving the purchase and installation of software and equipment upgrades to the City Traffic Operations Center and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second readings.
Madam Clerk, please sign board bill two oh-nine to Public Safety Committee.
So noted.
Dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill one forty-three, sponsored by, one forty-three committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman Conway, Alderwoman Florida, Alderman Cohn, and Ortman, and ordinance designating Iris as the official flower of the city of St. Louis and containing an effective date clause. Board Bill one ninety-one, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance recommending approved by the Airport Commissioner, Board of Estment and Apportement, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to enter into and execute the supplemental agreement to the Airport Aid Agreement for air service promotion between the City and Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill one eighty-four, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from D Multiple Family Dwelling District and H Area Commercial District to the H Area Commercial District only in City Block one forty, one four-six-three for properties on South Grand and Junietta and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one twenty-one, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance pertaining to the boundaries of the Central West and Historic District and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one seventy-one, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, in ordinance approving the redevelopment plan for ten oh-eight through ten-ten Locust Street. Board Bill one ninety, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, in ordinance amending ordinance six-eight-five-five-oh by modifying the terms of real estate tax abatement in the eight-hundred Olive Street Redevelopment Area. Board Bill one nine-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and Alderman Ortman, in ordinance adopting the International Fire Code two thousand and nine edition with the changes as the fire code of the city and containing a penalty clause, a savings clause, a severability clause, and an emergency clause. Board Bill one eight-seven, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment pla, and a development plan for nineteen hundred through nineteen twenty-eight pine and containing a severability clause. Board Bill one eighty-eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, in ordinance amending ordinance six-seven-eight-four-oh by modifying the land use and the terms of real estate tax abatement and twenty-two hundred Locust Street Redevelopment Area authorized by ordinance six-seven-eight-four-oh. Board Bill one eight-nine, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, in ordinance moving a development plan for nineteen hundred Market Street and containing a severability clause. Board Bill one twenty-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, in ordinance repealing ordinance six-nine-two-nine-five and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor license for any currently non-licensed package or drink liquor licensed premises within the boundaries of the nineteenth ward Liquor Control District and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one forty-four, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, in ordinance repealing ordinance six-eight-seven-eight-five and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor license for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the twenty-second ward Liquor Control District and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one eighty-two, sponsored by Alderman Vollmer, in ordinance repealing ordinance six-nine-oh-oh-two and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor license for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the tenth ward Liquor Control District and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one four-nine, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and Alderwoman Davis, in ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to submit all necessary applications and to enter into agreements with the National Association of County and City Health Officials or any other agency for the City Department of Health Medical Reserve Corps and, and authorizing the mayor and upon approval of the Board of Estment and Apportement to expend any funds received by said grants containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety-two, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and Alderwoman Davis, in ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of the Department of Human Services via the St. Louis Area Agency, Agent, Agent Jing to accept a grant award from the Missouri Alliance of Area Agencies on Aging in the amount of sixty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and to expend those funds for the Navigator Project Services and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize.
Board Bill one ninety-three, off the consent to the regular perfection.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Move board bill number one ninety-three off the perfection consent calendar and add it to the bottom of the regular perfection counter on the line item sixteen. Alderwoman from the seventh, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent
Mr. President, I move for perfection of the consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh, second by Alderman from the twentieth. Madam Clerk, please call the row. It's been moved, the second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries, we'll do it that way.
That's the extent of perfection consent.
Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill one seven-nine, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Arlington Grove Phase Two Redevelopment
Madam Clerk, please place board bill number one seventy-nine on the informal calendar.
So noted. Board Bill one ninety-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and Alderman Ortman, in ordinance adopting the International Fire Code two thousand and nine edition with changes as the fire code of the city and containing a penalty clause, a savings clause, and a severability clause and an emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the seventh, you recognize on the perfection of board bill number one ninety-three.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move for perfection of board bill one ninety-three.
Moved by Alderman from the seventh, second by Alderman from the ninth. Alderwoman, please proceed.
Thank you. Board Bill one ninety-three is updating our fire code from the current nineteen ninety-nine fire code that we've been operating under. A few years ago, when I was chairman of public safety, we updated the mechanical code, the building code, and all the other codes. This one, however, we didn't. So the bill before you today is to up, to take that fire code from nineteen ninety-nine and make it, make it current with the other codes. We're moving it up to two thousand nine. Changes in it are who is, the enforcement is defined. This includes fire safety unit, the fire department, building and inspection mechanical section, the building and inspection plan exam section, and Department of Health and Hospitals. It also increases the permit fees as those same fees have been in effect since nineteen ninety-nine, and those are listed in the board bill before you. In addition to that, a permit shall be obtained from the building official prior to the installation or alteration of any commercial kitchen exhaust system or hood suppression system. No fees were ever set forth in, in the previous ordinance, but so, but a fee was being collected all this time. So now that fee is being added to the fee table in the bill. The application fee has been added to cover administrative costs, and that fee mash, matches those established in the other fees such as building and residential codes. And it adopts the remainder of the fire code, renumbering and relocating changes from the adoption of the nineteen ninety-nine Boca code. The nineteen ninety-nine Boca code, first of all, there is no Boca code any longer, so it, we're very obsolete. And so that is what this bill before you is doing. And with that, I would renew my motion.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize.
I, and more, I just, I don't, I agree that we need to make changes. That's not the issue. The issue is that the plumbers and pipe fitters brought me about six pages of, things are referred to the wrong areas or got the wrong code numbers, and I would ask that we wait a week on this bill so that we can correct these. It's important that we do this, but it's also important that we do it right the first time. To do this and use the wrong codes, I, I think is wrong. I think, I think we can make, take a week, we can make corrections to the code.
Okay. Any further discussion, any further discussion?
I'd like to reply. There is a typo in here. It was supposed to be NFPA, N in stud in many places, it's NP. So that is a typo, and we can fix that. I would, and that's all I'll say right now.
All right, yeah. Alderwoman, Alderman from the twenty-seven.
Yes, I would like to inquire the sponsor of the bill.
Alderwoman from the seventh, will you yield to Alderman from the twenty-seven?
Yes.
Alderman from the twenty-seven, please proceed.
Thank you. There is a section in this bill that may take away some support, I mean, may take away some of the power from the fire marshal. Were you aware of that?
What this bill would do would move plan, exam, and review into the, into the building division where engineers and architects who are trained in these systems can evaluate them and either approve or deny them in conjunction with the entire plan review department. As I said, these are trained professionals who will be undertaking this job, and the problem and the reason this is occurring is that I think many of us have experienced extreme delays in getting plans approved while we've waited for the fire departments, fire safety people to do the review. Often businesses are told that even after six months, well, we haven't had time to look at this. And I think that is bad for business in St. Louis. It perpetuates the image of St. Louis as being an inefficient place to do business. And so this is going to streamline that process. And as I said, no fire safety is jeopardized because we do have trained people who know the fire suppression systems just as well as a fireman does.
So, so this would make it safer?
I'm saying yes, it would. It would make it safer, not safer necessarily, but safe.
Quicker.
And it would expedite the process.
Was there any point where the fire marshal's office was asked to?
I'm sorry, I, I'm not hearing.
Was there any point where the fire marshal, where his office was asked to speed up their process?
Many, many, many times. As I said, this fire code was not passed when it, all the other codes were passed because I was asked by the administration to delay and allow the chief to deal with the issue. It's been years now that the chief's been dealing with this issue, and nothing has changed.
Okay, so with, so with your bill now, the building division would have the power to, to shut a bill down also, right? I, I mean, to, to close a building down, right? Did you hear me?
No. I didn't, I'm sorry.
So, no, 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 with your bill.
Can I ask the people in the, the people in the back corner there around Alderwoman from twenty, from the seventh, could you hold it down because she's having trouble hearing, engaging in this discussion? And that's what we're here for. We're here to, to hear the discussion between the two, so.
No, so, so with your bill, the building commissioner would also have the same power as the fire marshal, correct? In terms of?
The fire marshal would still handle the safety issues that they do in, in their job. They just would not be in charge of plan review.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the first.
Just, first of all, just to make a point, when I came in here, people started to talk to me about this bill. I used to be the chair of public safety when I left here, actually. And I do know that you have to update your codes and things like that, but I am quite disappointed that we got here, and I don't know what the problem was. You couldn't even read the bill, even though you were here. So as we speak, the Alderwoman from the sixth just got it on her desk right now. I don't know what that was, but I think that is unfair to people who want to, want to be able to look at it. I went around to most of my colleagues in this corner. None of us had the board bill, so I just want to make that point. I don't know if that was done intentionally or what happened with that, but that is not a good way to do a bill, okay? And I would like to inquire of the sponsor.
Alderwoman from the seventh, will you yield for questioning to Alderwoman from the first?
Yes, but I, I don't know what board bill you're talking about because we didn't pass out.
Alderwoman from the seventh, hold on. Alderwoman from the first, I mean, Alderwoman from first, please proceed.
Okay, your question was what board bill? Are we doing one ninety-three right here now?
We are, but what I'm saying is that we didn't pass out anything new this morning. It's the same that's been on, in the committee and on the web.
I don't know if it was new or not. I know that it was not in our, I want to say, most of these people over here, we didn't have a copy of it, okay? And we just got it, and there's nothing I'm making up. You can inquire of the clerk, he will tell you the same, and lawyer, he will tell you the same thing, attorney, that we just got it, wasn't in our.
I'm sorry. It was a clerical error that it wasn't placed on your desk, but it is the same bill that was in committee, and it's the same bill that's been online.
I, I didn't infer that it wasn't, that wasn't what I said. I said it wasn't on our desk, and it is not in good form to proceed with a bill that one of the things that's supposed to happen is it is supposed to be on our desk when we get here or before we start the procedure to vote. So that was all that I said. I didn't say you did it. I just said it was in bad form, okay? Thank you.
And I'm telling you who was responsible.
That wasn't my point, thank you. I, I have, so you talk about, I just heard you talk to Alderman from the twenty-seventh about that you have tried to get the fire chief or the fire marshal to speed up the process, and, and so what has happened with the process not being in what you described as not fast enough? What, what has been the repercussions of that?
There have been businesses that have been delayed from opening and operating their business despite having everything else done. The fire suppression systems would be in place, and they would sit there waiting for days for the fire marshal's office to come and okay it so that this business could open.
Okay, well, let me tell you what I know about, of what happens when the fire marshal is unduly pressured or whatever happens, is that we have a business that's in the twenty-first ward, well, it's closed now, but it opened back to big fanfare a few years ago with the mayor there, and then it had a big fire in there, and then when we went about finding out what had happened, it was that improperly it had been passed through and had not been properly inspected, and people who had had questions about it, and that is what used to be the old Snooks Building at Newstead and Natural Bridge. First it started out the Nationals, then it became a Snooks, and then it became a, a private entity, another private entity owns it. And so there's this big fire, and nobody ever was able to explain to me or to explain to people how that got through without the proper inspections and without the proper inquiry. There have been other instances of this, and I have heard throughout the years about people being pressured about this, and that one of the things I don't want to see happen is that the process is too fast and there's a. the process is too fast and there's a fire. I don't want it to be my building. I don't want it to be my business. I don't want it to be somebody else's business. So taking this review away from the fire chief who, fire marshal, I'm sorry, who won a lawsuit against this city really looks retaliatory to me because we have a professional there who's come up through the ranks and rose to the rank of fire marshal. And it seems like to me that every time certain people get to a certain rank, if they don't agree with the administration and they're not doing their job the way the administration wants it to be done, then they are, they have to be cut out. I think that's wrong. I think that you have a fire marshal who's supposed to do his job and sometimes it doesn't happen as fast as you want it to happen. And that's wrong then to try to pressure him. Then when a fire occurs, everybody goes, oh, I don't know what happens and nobody wants to take responsibility for it. That's what we have checks and balances for. And when we remove those checks and balances and put it someplace else, and I have all the utmost respect for Mr. Oswald. I like Frank, I think he does a good job. I want him to keep doing building and division things. I would not want you to take the building division and put it under some other section, okay? I think we have divisions for a reason and for that reason I am opposed to this bill.
Alderman from the 23rd?
I just need to make a correction. I said the plumbers and pipe fitters gave me the information. It was actually the sprinkler fitters that gave me the information. And once again, my only issue with the bill still is the, you know, making the corrections to the right.
Okay.
Oh, I was just wanting to make a correction that it wasn't the plumbers and pipe fitters that gave me the information, but it was the sprinkler fitters that gave me the information showing me where it had wrong codes in places.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 9th?
Thank you, Mr. President. We, Alderman from the 1st talked about a situation, and maybe that situation occurred because the plan couldn't get me the process to be reviewed. The fire marshal is still in our inspection building with this. What we hope this will do is at least get the drawings out in a timely manner, you know, through whatever engineer does wherever it is. If it hasn't been working where it is, I've had problems with commercial projects in the 90 ward and then I made a chief a call to the fire marshal and we should never have to do this. And when you talk about pressure, did the pressure come from an older person? Is it coming from the business owner? You know, contractors when they're doing these projects, whether it be residential or commercial, you know, learn the timeline. And time is money and they have to get the project done. The final inspection is still going to be done, but if our time, that expertise is still going to be there. So I'm a post-monture on the bill and I hope we get it through in the past. And that's all I have to announce. But in the past, we have had a problem with getting commercial projects approved and through the process.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 7th, you recognize, close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. And I am happy that the people in front of me said that they couldn't hear either because I was feeling very old. But I want to point out that in this bill, it says the test for sprinkler, standpipe, and foam system shall be performed by a sprinkler fitter contractor licensed by the city of St. Louis. And those reports then go to the building division as well as the fire safety unit. The fire safety unit is responsible then for an annual inspection on any building that is operating. So they will still have an important responsibility. And the point is that we are all about public safety and there is no motive here to shortcut that. In fact, I think we will have more eyes looking at it with more scrutiny and you can be assured that the safety in St. Louis will continue. If we don't pass this, though, and we continue to keep the 99, I think there's a potential here for everybody's housing insurance rates to go up because we are so far behind in our code. So with that, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 7th, seconded by Alderman from the 9th, that we perfect board bill number 193. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers? Alderman Flowers? Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Moore? Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Young?
Aye.
Alderman Conway? Alderman Ortman?
Aye.
Alderman Vollmer?
Aye.
Alderman Villa?
Aye.
Alderman Honowitz?
Aye.
Alderman Wessels? Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Florida?
Aye.
Alderman Behringer?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy? Alderman Davis? Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman French?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
No.
Alderman Vaccaro?
No.
Alderman Ogilvy?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Carter?
No.
Alderman Krusen?
Aye.
President Reed?
No.
Alderman Flowers? Alderman Conway? Alderman Honowitz?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
No.
I can't hear you.
No.
Alderman French? 16 aye votes, 8 no votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion. Alderman from the 7th and perfected board bill number 193. Alderman from the, Madam Clerk, Alderman from the 26th, you want to take board...
Yeah, I'd like to move board bill 179 and place it back on the perfection calendar, Mr. President.
All right, please proceed.
I move to perfect board bill 179.
Madam Clerk, please read board bill number 179.
Board bill 179, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Arlington Grove Phase 2 redevelopment area and containing a severability clause.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 26th, seconded by Alderman from the 20th. Alderman from the 26th, please proceed.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we perfect board bill number 199. It's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers?
Aye.
Alderman Flowers?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Moore? Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Young?
Aye.
Alderman Conway? Alderman Ortman? Alderman Vollmer?
Aye.
Alderman Villa?
Aye.
Alderman Honowitz?
Aye.
Alderman Wessels? Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Florida?
Aye.
Alderman Behringer?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy? Alderman Davis? Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman French? Alderman Boyd?
Abstain.
Alderman Vaccaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Carter?
Aye.
Alderman Krusen?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Moore? Alderman Conway? Alderman Ortman?
Aye.
Alderman Wessels? Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
Alderman Davis? 23 aye votes, 1 abstain.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from the 26th and perfected board bill number 179. Alderman from the 20th?
Mr. President, members of the board, I would move, please, to suspend the rules for the purposes of bringing down board bill 192 to the third reading and final passage consent calendar.
It's moved by Alderman from the 20th, seconded by Alderman from the 9th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers?
Aye.
Alderman Flowers?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Moore? Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Young?
Aye.
Alderman Conway? Alderman Ortman?
Aye.
Alderman Vollmer?
Aye.
Alderman Villa?
Aye.
Alderman Honowitz?
Aye.
Alderman Wessels? Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Florida?
Aye.
Alderman Behringer?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
Alderman Davis? Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman French? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Carter?
Aye.
Alderman Krusen?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Was that an aye?
Yes.
Alderman Tyers?
Aye.
Alderman Conway? Alderman Wessels? Alderman Davis? Alderman French? Alderman Ogilvy?
Aye.
24 aye votes, no no votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from the 20th. Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on third reading consent calendar. Go ahead, Clerk, Madam Clerk.
Board bill 192.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for approval of third reading consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 7th, seconded by Alderman from the 9th. Any discussion?
Previous roll.
It's been a request for previous roll. There are no objection. Motion carries.
That's the extent of third reading consent.
Third reading, report of engrossment.
Board bill 199, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman and Alderwoman Hubbard, Wessels, Boyd, Ingracia, Williamson, Bosley, and Ortman, and on its adopting and approving an amended amendment to the North Side Regeneration Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the 5th, you recognize on the third reading, final passage of board bill number 199, committee substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I move for third reading and final passage of 199, committee substitute.
Moved by Alderman from the 5th, seconded by Alderman from the 9th. Any discussion?
I'd like to renew my motion for third reading and final passage of 199.
It's been moved and seconded that we third read and final pass, board bill number 199, committee substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. It's been a request for previous roll. Been an objection to previous roll. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers?
Aye. Aye.
Alderman Moore? Alderman Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia? Alderman Young?
Aye.
Alderman Conway? Alderman Ortman?
Aye.
Alderman Vollmer?
Aye.
Alderman Villa?
Aye.
Alderman Honowitz?
Aye.
Alderman Wessels?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Florida?
Aye.
Alderman Behringer?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
Alderman Davis? Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman French? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro?
No.
Alderman Ogilvy?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Carter?
Aye.
Alderman Krusen?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Conway? Alderman Villa?
No.
Alderman Wessels? Alderman Davis? Alderman French?
Alderman from the 1st?
I'd like to apologize for interrupting roll call in the middle. I've been duly test-ized by my senior member over here, my former president, and I request that you change my vote to a no, please.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change.
So noted. 21 aye votes, 3 no votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion. Alderman from the 5th, third read and finally pass, board bill number 199, committee substitute.
Board bill 200, committee substitute, sponsored by Alderman and Alderwoman Hubbard, Wessels, Boyd, Ingracia, Williamson, Bosley, and Ortman.
Alderman from the 5th, you recognize on the third reading and final passage of board bill number 200, committee substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for a third reading and final passage of board bill 200, committee substitute.
Moved by Alderman from the 5th, seconded by Alderman from the 9th. Any discussion?
I would like to renew my motion for third reading and final passage of 200, committee substitute.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 5th, seconded by Alderman from the 9th, that we third read and final pass, board bill number 200, committee substitute. There's been a request for previous roll. Here are no objection. Motion carries.
That's the extent of third reading, report of engrossment, and final passage.
Report of enrollment.
Board bills 199, committee substitute, 200, committee substitute, and 192.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session, affix his Move for adoption, our cursory resolution, calendar, and entertain a second on that motion. Move for adoption, our cursory resolution calendar, I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by the alderman from the 20th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Dispense with line item 21, 22. We have some miscellaneous unfinished business. Alderman from the, yes, she's going to read. Madam Clerk.
Out of the Streets Committee, board bill 138 was reported sponsored by Alderman Honowitz and honors establishing a stop sign for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Macklin Avenue at Finkman Street and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of miscellaneous and unfinished business. When, let's see, Thursday, Housing Committee meeting on Thursday at 10:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Friday, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman third, you recognize, yeah, Alderman from the third.
Mr. President, members of the board, anyone who has a board bill in the Streets Committee, I would advise you now to notify the president or the clerk so that we will have a meeting this Thursday at 11 o'clock in the Kennedy Room.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the seventh.
I'm standing for excused aldermen, sir.
Okay. Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the second.
I'm sorry, that microphone was too short, I couldn't. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to announce that tomorrow, October the 19th, is our Fifth Annual Bait and Taste. Our parade begins at 10:00 a.m. and it'll lead from Riverview and McLaren and go down to Halls Ferry, to the Halls Ferry Circle, and then Riverview and end at Hickey Park. It's from 10:00 to 2:00. We have some car show, we have a great live band lineup, which will be wonderful. And also, I'd like to say that yesterday was our last day for our spay and neuter program. We had four clinics and it was a great success. We had all, over 50 animals that were spayed and neutered and vaccinated, and I encourage each alderman to do the same. I had residents that came from other wards in need of that program and are looking to move it. I know Alderman Williamson, there was somebody there who's going to be talking to you two soon. So I hope to see you tomorrow at Bait and Taste and no more rain.
Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make an announcement that tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. at St. Anthony's Hall is the Trinity Neighborhood Association meeting. And also tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. is the Dutch Town Harvest Festival taking place at Virginia Avenue and Liberty Street. Should be a great time. Come on down and enjoy the fun.
Alderman from 17.
Yes, Mr. President. I was going to announce that we have a Parks Committee meeting next week at 9:00 before the board meeting.
You have something? All right, Alderman from the seventh.
I'd like to thank all of the colleagues who attended the public safety meeting yesterday and the presentation by the police chief on the reduction to six districts. And I'd like everybody to know that we're sending by email copies of the presentation so that you can review them and share them with your constituents. If you don't do email, we're having hard copies made based on your secretary's information. And also, I want to remind everybody that the Prop S, RFP, is on the web. So if you have agencies that are interested in providing services for youth at risk, please have them complete the application and get it in because the deadline looms on November 8th, and I want everyone to know that. And that's it.
All right, Alderman from the 22nd.
Mr. President, members of the board, on Tuesday, October 22nd at 9:00 a.m., there would be a ribbon cutting for the first urgent care center, private urgent care center in West St. Louis, and everyone is invited.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the third.
Mr. President, members of the board, I don't have to invite you because you're one responsible for giving that great lunch out there on parking lot. So I invite all the alderpersons to go out there, and especially all the women, because I enjoy serving you a hot dog.
Alderman from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The St. Louis City Treasurer, Tashara Jones, kicks off a series of town hall meetings this Wednesday, October 23rd, at the Schlafly Branch Library at 6:00 p.m., and you can check out the website for the additional meetings.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? As Alderman from the third said, the full board of aldermen picnic, an employee appreciation picnic, is today. We have about 30 minutes to finish getting everything ready. It's going to be a great picnic and a great lunch, and I know the city employees are really looking forward to it. So let's go out, let's put on our aprons, let's, let's make sure that we tell, show the city employees how much we appreciate what they do each and every day, because they do a phenomenal job on behalf of the residents of the city and they keep us all looking good. So we, this is our one opportunity each year to really tell them how much we appreciate it. And also, I want to thank each and every one of you for all, everything that you've done so far on this picnic, and it's a great tradition for this board of aldermen to give this picnic each year. Alderwoman from the seventh, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would ask that we excuse the alderpeople from the 4th, the 8th, the 13th, the 21st, and the 19th because of their necessary absence.
Moved by the alderman from the 7th, seconded by the alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that this board adjourn until Friday, October 25th.
It's been moved by the alderman from the 7th, seconded by the alderman from the 25th. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, stand to adjourn.